Okay, let's see, the hour is here, so let's begin, so we can soon as it starts, as soon as it begins. Uh, thank you, welcome to everybody that's here.
Travis.
We proceed for Travis. But listen, as I said, welcome everybody, thank you for being here on this beautiful evening day. Let's see, I've got the approval of the minutes, does anybody have any comments or concerns about last month's meetings? The only, the only correction that I would make is about you, the first, your, your name is not Greg Rassonville. I get called every time.
Change it up a little bit. I'm sorry, I will fix that.
I'm around. Since there's a T E H, they don't fit, but two cash. It's like Sean, you have to go with your name. My last name is T H R A C. Yes.
Uh, okay, any other comments on meetings, have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Second. The majority is standing. All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. And then the minutes of the March meeting, all right. Uh, let's see, introduction guests and public comments.
Do you need to do the special call meeting also?
Special call.
Oh, yeah, those minutes are there.
Special call meeting, let's see, alright, I missed that, I'm sorry. Uh, that was for also a special call meeting to discuss the call of the year.
Yes.
So any comments that don't make. Is there a motion to approve these minutes, but the motion will be approved.
Second.
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 The majority is standing. All in favor, say a aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Who's curious, so both minutes are approved.
So can I just make one, one quick comment, because this, uh, summer's always very good about putting this in our minutes, but the commission meetings have changed, um, so we are now, on the second Thursday is our agenda workshop at six o'clock, and that's budget at five. Um, and then our regular meetings are the third Thursday at six o'clock. So it's Thursday, Thursday now.
It's what most confusing. Budget is a general meeting. Budget's the second Thursday and general meeting is the third.
Yes, yes.
You have Thursday, Thursday.
Yeah, that's a best school board, a school board is, yeah, that, that's after. School board's the first Thursday, so they kinda, that was my point. Thank you all for this.
So this board can go on.
So Dawn, is our, uh, our budget on the commission meeting this month or next month?
This month, so tomorrow, Thursday night, yeah, and it, it passed through budget with no questions, no discussion, no nothing, and it didn't even get pulled out of the budget consent, um, so it, it has already passed that, so it's got. Yeah.
Go in.
Good weather. No, so I think, I think it'll be okay, I don't think there'll be any discussion, it'll just pass on through.
Because non-adjournable and all that stuff, and in some very difficult circumstances.
And, and came and showed up in case there were questions, so, yeah, thank you on Janey for doing that.
Okay, we have no gesture, public comments, I'm gonna do one. Now what you've all been waiting for is my report, being the chairman, I'll try to keep it happening. Let's see, Dustin is starting May the nineteenth, which you all are aware of, his housing has been secured temporarily, it's been rimmed till we find a little engine somewhere on the hill. Uh, let's see, we have some minor finishes to the book sort of equipment, I don't know if that has been completed, the punch list, is that?
Oh, you want me to comment now?
Yeah. Keep wait, let's wait, we'll do it through your report. Let's see, I attended a staff meeting on March, excuse, April the ninth, and I'll refer, I'm just making. Let's see, we have a, we have a meeting with Travis and, uh, Benning, to kind of get a kickoff of our how we kind of work together, to sort of an introductory, how can we do this, we're on the meets, uh, Friday, we'll have a meeting.
Yeah, we're gonna meet on Friday, there's been a need, nine libraries, it's closed.
Probably be, yeah, the coffee or something, so that'll be, well, that's just kind of a kickoff for us, just to talk about how we wanna maybe start thinking about how to, how to do a strategic planning, we don't know what we don't know at this point, so that's why, that's why we have this issue. Uh, we need to appoint a subcommittee to nominate officers going forward for the meeting. We must be on this, this to nominate me and secretary and vice chair. This has to be subcommittee to the public meeting sometime in the next weeks or so.
Yeah.
Something where we're leaving before that, so.
Maybe.
They probably be me as the chairman, unless I commit some foul crimes, and then, probably, uh, some maybe is, secretary issues.
Unless anyone else wants the job.
And we need a vice chairman to kind of help me out with some of the notions, so. So that'll have to be a formal meeting to, to do that, so.
So do we need to phrase this in a form of a motion, do we need to volunteer, do we need to volunteer somebody?
I think any and all of that, yeah, we could probably do it, save the revenue, so, because we've got to get this settled, so we can go to the respective governments. Uh, oh, that's right, that's right, that's right, yeah, the committee, this subcommittee is just for the officers.
Yeah.
That, that requirement, and the next part of this is to we should all have Congress for the new committee members, we need to, we give a poll on that, thank you.
So you're saying that this subcommittee just can meet like right before the meeting on May the twentieth?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Do we need to assign me, do we need to assign members for the subcommittee?
Or volunteer.
Or volunteer.
Volunteer to do that, we usually have about three, three, it takes about thirty minutes to do.
Uh, I mean, if it's a volunteer for the subcommittee, I'll, I'll volunteer to be a member of the subcommittee.
I would too. Okay, so, yeah, Richard, if somebody needs to get nominated, probably a vice chair, because I doubt we're gonna get another chairman, I would get the secretary, so it's probably just to go for the vice chair.
That you have to bring the whole slate.
That you have to bring, yeah, it'll have to, it'll have to be a former.
I, I can also volunteer to be on that subcommittee, I'll give us three.
That is.
May the twentieth.
It was.
Like you made it fourth.
Three, thirty, two, four, two.
That is, only a, that.
This was for town meetings.
Yeah. Give us the officer slate, move forward. Session.
Be on the June.
Be on the June, the general forward, effective. Governor, city council, municipal, local. The next part of that is, you should have, like I said, you should have the folders of the people who do, who want to become, possibly want to become trustees, replace the filled terms that have expired. These also need to be voted on for the next.
We don't have to vote on these, we can, unless, unless you all want to vote on these, we can submit all of these applicants, unless you have an issue with any of them, but we, I don't think we have to vote on them, do we? To send them to the governments, we never have.
Can you have everybody to recommend?
Yeah, these are just recommendations.
They have the ultimate voting authority, so they can make recommendations.
Dawn's term is up at the end of June, so we're gonna recommend that you, you renew. Greg's term is up, so we're gonna recommend that Greg's term be renewed in the city of Maryville, and then the county, the rest of these are all county people, county representatives, and there will be two, two more positions besides Sean. So we have four people who have expressed interest.
Fill two slots.
Fill two slots, we've got four people who have.
Fill two slots.
Just fill two slots, so unless you all have any opposition or objection to any of these four, I recommend we just give these four to the mayor, with Sean's name being renewed and Greg's being renewed, we don't have to vote on that, that's just my ruling.
Mine has to go.
Yours has to go with the.
City mayor.
Yeah.
Alright, there are no comments, that's what we do. Alright, let's see, um, there was a, I remember Kevin at the staff meeting about headshots, or photographs, is that, or just board as well, or is that just?
Yeah, yes, well, or you couldn't hear.
No, I'll pass it. Uh, so Sounders Springs Concert to be continued.
No, no, you can cover that one though.
Then the library is closed this weekend, Thursday, Friday, so Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for Easter, so happy Easter. Those notices are published, y'all should, and that is, close my report. Uh, let's see, what is next, now we will go to the moment we've all been waiting for, it's Aunt May's Assistant Director.
Uh, hello everyone.
Excuse me, intro.
Um, wow, you guys, the director report is, is just amazing, um, first off, let me just give a huge shout out, um, for, I've been here almost eight years, and since I've adopted the PR department, I have always dreamed of our planning be more, being more in advance, and it's happened. In this report, you are seeing our summer reading programs, um, well flushed out, it is in Monday, huge shout out to the managers and their departments and all our programmers, because this is no small feat, and when you will see, I, I was reading, I was like, well, feel bad, because, you know, yeah, I can mention Touch Your Truck and, and MiniCon, but what about the Pirate Concert? And what about the, the Blue Well Bowl Party, and then there's like a skating rink.
And the bowling alley?
I think you guys, we have a.
And the doll swimming pool.
Exactly.
I was like, oh, wow.
So, so it's exciting, so it's really exciting, um, please, please check it out, uh, this, what is it, this past year, we have shifted the, um, the quarters that are, um, printed newsletter cover, and so this is the first time our newsletter is actually gonna encompass our summer reading as well, so that we're not cannibalistic in our, in our, um, or actually, we are cannibalistic in our marketing, so it's freed up some time, it looks good, it will, it's in its, uh, final reviews now, everything fits. That was pretty impressive, um, what is it, so please, it starts May sixteen, I hope that all of you will consider, uh, participating, we do have lots of great adult programs as well, um, what is it, uh, yeah, so, um, and Dustin, you are gonna be coming in right at the beginning of it, so.
I'm looking forward to it.
Um, okay, so any questions about all the wonderful programs? I, I can tell you that some of the fun things that, um, we have had is that, um, the, the youth services department, they have where children can write letters to the authors of books that they like, and, um, what is it, uh, one patron left a comment on our Facebook with, uh, with photos that says, we love B C P L and all the amazing programs offered by the children's department. Uh, the child looks forward to every single library visit, we would never have thought to have sent a letter on our own, so thanks to B C P L for providing the mailbox and sending our letter. So that's, that's great, um, from our reference, I love the Inquiring Minds Wants to Know section, um, some things that, I'm looking for a book about a girl who has roommates. That's good, that's good, I wanna know, did you find it? Oh, good job. Um, and other great ones, what is it, there was a ninety-year-old gentleman who came and looked at our collection of yearbooks, and he got married at the end of his freshman year, and he didn't have the money to buy the yearbook, and so he was excited that he could go back and revisit that, and that's, that's amazing. Um, let's see, we have had kudos on our social media for, I'm just finding the notes. Okay, on, um, on April ninth, the Lego Club was in, was happening, and the attendees saw that a basket was broken in the youth services department, and they asked the staff what they needed. And so the Lego crew made them a bookmark holder, a scrap paper holder, a pencil holder, and next week, they're, they have plans to make them a sticker holder. So, so I invite you guys to check it out, the, the Lego creations are on Youth Services, um, in, on the fourteenth, um, on our social medias, Transparent Language, which was the vendor who was excited and asked if they could use one of our marketing assets, um, shared our summer reading, uh, program to you, and you guys should check it out, it'll, it'll make you laugh. And not only has it gone over well with the community, other libraries, and we have had libraries from Texas, Ohio, Wisconsin, all going, seeing our post and sharing it, because it doesn't bother, so check it out. Um, what is it, and another library from, I don't know how to say it, Wausheon? W A U S E O N, Public Library, is using it to announce their summer reading program, so, um, kudos to the, to the, uh, PR team. Um, what is it, the, the baby ball pit was shared also on social media, and you guys, you have to check it out, it is the most adorable thing. If you need a pick-me-up, you walk through this, and just the littleies in a baby ball pit, it's just, yeah. Youth Services is magic, so, uh, what is it, and so is our reference department, we have had, so April fourteenth was National Gardening Day, and so we had a seed library post, and, um, it's being shared, I think, uh, last, I'm gonna check in with, with Sarah to see how many, um, shares it had, but it is being shared very, uh, widely throughout the community as well, so, um, our community enjoys our social media, they're engaging with it, um, and we have some labs on there, so check it out. Okay, and that's probably not even covering all the things that we can do, you know, our patron services, uh, staff create an amazing display every month, so please check it out. Okay. As for the projects, okay, our AMH, so we have one more piece coming in from Germany, but in the interim, we have, uh, enough to keep it working, so what had happened is they had delivered the, the, the device, and we had a internal monitor with it. We had swapped that out for an external monitor, but there was a burn mark on the internal monitor, um, and so we have another monitor coming from Germany, and it should arrive next week, but that doesn't stop us from moving forward. Um, the IT department, um, book systems, um, so county IT, biblioteca, and, uh, book systems all got together, and they did not stop. They finally got it together, we know, well, we probably have an associate's degree in, um, IT now. But, um, everything's configured and testing, there was a little testing that started yesterday, and then again today, so we are, we are very excited. Every Tuesday, we are giving a community message to keep the community updated, we have a website, a webpage that has been created for that, you will find that under what's happening, news and events, thank you, book return project, and it will show you all the steps that we've gone through, so if you don't hear from us, it will be there, but every Tuesday, there's also a post about it, um, that, uh, that will be keeping the community excited and looking forward to it, so. All right, as for the book return, um, construction components of it, so, uh, Denny and Dawn and I walked through, the punch list was small, there's a few more things that, um, we have, or I say we, they have to arrange, they've done a great job on it, um, once it is complete, meaning the punch list and the construction elements of it, and the, um, the AMA training is going well, we're gonna get a timeline, um, and we're gonna send it out to you, we're trying to give you at least a week's heads up. We'd like to invite you all to a ribbon cutting, we have it on the mayor's, not on his calendar, he knows that we're gonna have it, and he knows we want to invite him, so we're gonna hopefully get the mayor out here for it, so if you have some time and you can pop over for about twenty minutes on the day that it happens, you will get those details, um, we'd love to have you. The boogie monster will be ready, okay, um, at the staff meeting, in a conversation that Stephanie and I were having earlier, um, what is it, uh, one of the things that we thought would be helpful, or she thought was helpful, and I agree one hundred percent, is that on our staff site portal, we are putting, um, headshots of all our employees, and, uh, once that is ready, we will be sharing that with Dustin and with all of you, so it's no longer recognize the face, what's the name, or I know the name, but what's, what do they look like, so that's gonna be available to you, um. The staff would like to say thank you to all of you for recognizing us in all the ways that you do, but especially this last Friday with the potato and salad bar, um, it was delicious, um, and it was thoughtful, and it was very well received, so thank you.
A lot of life there.
Yeah. Um. Okay, um, the budget committee and commission workshop, that was last week. Something every week, you know, um, and as Dawn mentioned, it breezed through, it was a very lovely experience to have, so, uh, for those of you who can, yeah, I was gonna say, for those of you who are available, we'd love to have you our final appearance where things will actually be voted on, and what's gonna be voted on in April is the increase in, um, the utilities line to cover the unexpected increase due to the construction project and the chiller compressor replacement pieces, so, um, so, uh, if you can put it in your calendar at six PM, room four thirty at the Blount County Courthouse, and that is April seventeenth. Okay, Thursday, yes, sir. Okay, um. Wanted to add, and I think we mentioned this a little bit earlier as well, we have made some changes to the policy calendar, please review that. Um, basically, we took, the handbook was coming up, and we decided that we wanted to have, um, Dustin's input on that, so we've just shifted it back, so. No, Dustin's like, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, um, our LSTA for this year, sorry, our LSTA is our Library Services and Technology Act grant, that is what, I'm thinking of you next. What is it, uh, the, this grant is what helps us keep all our technology, our laptops, our desktops, our monitors um, up to date, and that is a grant through the IMLF, the Institute of Museums and Library Services, um, and, uh, that is, at this stage, okay, so we're gonna be applying again next year, um.
What's this, Doris?
It closes, it closes, um, this year's LSTA closes May thirtieth for reports, and we're on track, we've made all our purchases, we're waiting for some iPad cases, and we'll finish it up and it'll be done, so thank you. Uh, okay, and I mentioned the, the headshots?
Let us know when we're, for the headshots, we have to come and get a picture, maybe.
Well, we're not.
Oh, I'm.
I don't think we are.
We are, alright.
But I'm sure, no, that's a brilliant idea, though, and you want. It's, it's, it's for the board, it's for the board.
The staff, bitch.
For the. Just the staff, but I'll tell you, look, I'll tell you what, we can do headshots for you guys.
Sorry, I missed.
I just told you, we can't do any good headshots. I've got my camera.
There's the website, who's on the board of customs, I don't know if that's been updated, but now some people have already.
Gotcha, I'll check that.
Take Stephanie's name off.
Thanks. Beautiful.
Uh, okay, let's see, let's move on to Travis, now it's your turn, give us a report on the foundation.
Uh, sure, uh, blood pressure seems to be okay, my blood work. Next week, uh, foundation is purports to be healthy. We have recently formed two committees, uh, communication as well as a planning committee, those are intended with planning committee to act in concert with our symbiotic relationship with both the friends of the library as well as the trustees, so that we have a strategic planning process in place. We've already identified the members and our planning goals, so that they can coincide with the goals of the trustees, and we didn't wanna try to be catching up, we're slightly ahead with formation and structure and our planning goals elaborated. Uh, communication committee has resulted in recent updates to our website, which have yielded some fruit, uh, our website has uh, come to the attention of some donors, and we've been able to receive some gifts to the foundation to fund capital needs for the library, and that goes along with another um, initiative, which is we restructured some of the arrangements with our, um, investments management, into our investment management portfolio, so that we can receive securities such as stocks and bonds, it's typically legacy gifts and legacy givings, and that gives the, um, the grantee the ability to seek those tax advantages, and it provides the accommodation for that with the foundation bylaws, and that's, we've already been able to receive some funds in that manner. Uh, let's see, and the, the last thing is we've got some coordination going on, we're, so we're this little tiny nonprofit, and we're trying to make some arrangements with the county IT department, so that they maintain our archives, um, and our records electronically, so that we have continuity, uh, for the foundation. Uh, with those three items, the two committees, uh, and our investment opportunities for donors, and county IT, that concludes any business I have for. and county IT, that concludes any business I have for.
Meeting day, they've got a change to twenty third seventeen.
Uh, yeah, I got it now, everybody but Alexa was available, so yes, I'll send that.
So, okay, so, so.
Nine AM, Summer, can we have a room at nine AM?
Nine AM or the twenty third?
Uh, sorry, eight AM.
Eight AM, that's even better. Uh, okay, babe.
Okay, um. So we have a full slate of officers, which in an all volunteer organization is is a good achievement, so we're moving that forward. Our annual meeting, I'm hoping, as I've said to you several times, I nag you a lot about this. I'm hoping you all are members of the Friends of the Library. So you'll be getting an email from us, but the annual meeting date is on the eighteenth of June, so Wednesday. Uh, we always provide lunch and it's, it's a room, large room, it's, it's the shared Lawson Room, pretty well packed. So it's a good way to see community folks that are coming in who support the library through the Friends. Um, and you're welcome to come. We are continuing on our strategic plan. I would say we're probably about halfway through. We're taking it slow and steady. And many of you probably know Bob Myers. Bob Myers has been a professional here in the county forever. He worked at Arco Vic, in HR. And now he's a wise man who does excellent strategic planning and he's a former friend. He's doing this for us pro bono um and has a really excellent technique for working with nonprofits uh on a strategic team. And I will tell you this, the first thing that he did, you know so often a strategic plan, the default is to start with a SWOT analysis, Swear of Strengths Week, this, all that stuff. He started with our making a list of all the stakeholders of the Friends, which kind of, we sort of went, okay. And it was amazing when we started bearing down on that, how many people, I mean, the people that donate the books, the people that come to the book sales, the volunteers, the Board of Trustees, so many groups. We had about twelve groups that we interact with. And so the strategy is, how can we do better? How can we serve them? How can we meet the needs of the community? So he, that's just, and I know, I'm telling you all that because I know you're getting ready to go into a strategic planning process and this one's been very helpful. Um, we bought, we did, did a little bit investing in the Friends. We have lots of people and and lots of big operation going on downstairs. And so we needed to get a real data management system. And so we've invested in a company called Little Green Light, LGL. And now we know all kinds of things. For example, we have seven hundred and sixty-five active members right now. Those are dues paying up to date folks. We have a hundred and forty-six active volunteers, which is remarkable. And we're working on retention of them and making sure they're happy. That's one of our strategic goals, is to make sure that we've got happy volunteers and and we're being appreciative of them. Uh, but yeah, that's, that's, and we can maneuver and do all kinds of things in that. Um, you, this year, you, I think you know, we uh separated ourselves from the PR and communications professionals with the library. And so we have our own communications and media person now. And uh, one of, and and so I hope you're all, if you're on Facebook, I hope you're a friend of the Friend, because she's doing a marvelous job in getting lots of stuff out. She does two or three posts a week and they're really, they're good lovely shots of the library and they talk about how you can support the library through the Friends. But one of the things we realized is that this has been the Friends logo for some time. And it's a great one, it it tells who we are, but it has zero to do um in terms of brand and in terms of uh appearance with the library's logo. And so we went to, at the recommendation of the library staff, we went to Visual Voice who did the library's logo two years ago, I guess. And they're creating one for us. We're contracted with them and we hope we'll have a big reveal in about a month. But we're hoping that it'll be something that'll at least convey to the public that we are different from Blount County Library, but we're a part of the family of of Blount County Library. A lot of people in the public don't understand the difference in us and you all. And so when we ask them to join us, they say, I already have my library card. We said, no, 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 no. So we're, we're trying to make that clear. Um, the three chairs will be meeting on Friday. We're going to talk about strategic planning. And one of the things that I'm interested in is making sure that now we've got three, three people to work together and to make sure that we all know what each other's lane is. You know, what do the Friends do, what does the foundation do, what the Board of Trustees do, so that we can clearly convey this to to our people. And finally, you are always welcome to the Friends of the Library Board Meeting. It's always the Tuesday following this meeting at four in the afternoon. And it's uh usually next door, but that's next Tuesday at four. And if you ever want to drive by, you're certainly welcome to be there. And that's all I have. Anybody have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Randy. Um, Liz?
Hello.
How about you?
Uh, well, I sent my reports, of course, ahead of time, so um you'll see from our April report, May sixth, that we got an in-service on community engagement and scholarships, um, which will be the final official regional in-service that we have for this year. So um, as you all are aware, every staff member, every paid staff member of all tiers um is required to get some kind of professional development. So we can't acquire that if we don't provide the opportunity, so. Um, we wanted to bring to, bring attention and celebrate our library workers. April uh always hosts National Library Week, um, which was last week. And then National Library Workers' Day was open last week. So thank you to all the library workers for all that they do. It's, it's not easy always, but you all do paying, passive jobs. So uh, board appointment reminders, you all are on top of that. Uh, we were going to give reminders about uh LSTA tech grant spending. As you all know, we have updated our trustee certification program modules. And with that in mind, I have two certificates, certificate. Um, this one is for Richard Fogg. I have, it's official. I know you did, but it's official now. You can frame, it's frame worthy. And also Dexter Stewart. So, yeah.
And that helps us with the LSTA grant, so thank you, that counts.
Yes, so thank you for taking the time to do that. You all, I'm going to give these to you when we're done. Um, I also wanted to talk a little bit about the Public Library Management Institute, PLMI, which is a program, a certification program for those library directors and managers in Tennessee that maybe don't have their advanced degree, but they want a certificate, they want to um graduate from a professional program. And so um Laurie Thompson, who is our state uh continuing education coordinator, puts on the PLMI program. And this year we have uh, or this cohort, it's about an eighteen month program. And this cohort that we have, we have two directors from our region, Lori Hoffs from the Polk County Libraries and also Brana Pagden from AWOL, um Carnegie Public Library in Vin County. So we gave a little shout out to them, kudos to them for completing that program this year. Um, and we're really proud of them for doing that. Uh, and then, of course, uh, just wanted to let you all know, you hear us talk about the standards for public libraries. Um, we have gone through and made just a few updates, clarifications, nothing major. But um, those are now going to be housed online just for ease of updating, so we won't be printing the booklets every morning, but you can certainly get them online. So what else? Okay, um, I've got the reads, circulation statistics for March, that you all got that report. And then just a, another reminder, um, save the date for the annual trustee workshop. Our workshop that we co-host will be held on um Thursday, September twenty-fifth, at the Arch Local Public Library in Crossville at central time. I should have put that up. I mean, I will, I will really talk about that and make sure, once it hits the registration points, uh, or registration, that you understand it's central time, so. That's all I have.
One quick question here. We're looking at the semi-annual board chair.
Yes.
Set date, it's set?
It has not. I gave everybody till, I think, April twenty-third to respond, so. Hopefully, I've, I've heard, I've had, I've heard from quite a few, but not everybody, so, yes.
Okay, let's see, nominated committee, Paul, we've already talked about that earlier. Old business, the library loan policy.
I'm not convinced we approved.
Hold on.
Not.
Approved.
Old business, you don't have a loan policy?
Oh, yes, yes. I didn't know if there's any further discussion.
Any other special?
I'm assuming it was the last, last time the corrections were made. Further discussion? For those in favor of approving the internal library loan policy?
I agree.
First. Which is. Space planning report. That's the government set out, some laws. I think I saw it during.
Yes, so everyone should have received a link um so that they can, they can download it. Um, we do have three paper copies that are available. Um, if you wanted a, a paper copy, I didn't print out thirteen, unless you really. Yeah, because it's about a hundred and seventy-three pages. Yeah.
Perfect, if we could use that to discuss. Okay, moving on to new business, we have a public comment policy. To look here. That is, that frequently describes for. Must be noted, it's happening. Sorry, I'm, the people have a comment, I mean. That is not necessarily to vote, it's to, it's to review. Okay, that would sound good.
It's just, it's, it's up for review, so it's, we do it every other year, and so it's. I didn't say any, many more courage, I thought that's good.
And then we have a hotspot policy. Hotspot, which is uh, we like renting internet.
We have Verizon and we have T-Mobile.
And as I considered the question that I was asked earlier. Um. The, the question was, it was a patron who was a little aggrieved by the policy of having to reserve them with a, with debit or credit card when they didn't, didn't have one. And as I have considered that, the only, the only option that I can see, and I don't know if it's a good option, is that, you know, is potentially to have them, in effect, give the money for what, for what the, the device or whatever they, they're going to be renting as, as a hold, as a hold for it, because the whole purpose is to make sure that that we can, that we can recoup, recoup everything. Because if you, if we don't have a policy like this, then we really find ourselves is potentially having to, be, the alternative to it is, well, we're going to have to file suit to reclaim this, this property. Or even worse than that, if they don't return it at a certain point, then that becomes theft. And we really don't want, that's not a, a, an avenue that we want to head down. So I think at this point, I think we can be um pretty firm on that. I, I mean, it just, as long as when folks come to do it, they know this is what the policy is. And it, you know, it's, unfortunately, there's just not really a good option otherwise, because this is, this technology is just a little different than what we might have had ten, fifteen years ago, you know, with, with VHS tapes or, or movies on, um, movies on disc. So that's kind of where I, where I come from um with, with that.
Thank you.
Any other comments on? You don't want to poll them out? Is that what's on here?
It's just over two hundred.
Right, okay.
Yes, so we need to change that, thank you, because we have it up Monday.
Okay, yeah. That's about two months worth of internet service.
And you shut the service off to that anyway.
You, you break it.
Right, yeah, because they don't.
Can I ask a question about that? It's just a consumer. Is there a fine if they get, like, book fines, if they don't come back when they're supposed to come back?
Yes.
It's different from the deposit.
Right, it's two dollars a day, up, up to fifty. But if we've got, you know, if, if we've got a card on file, that, sort of hold on it, and you can just charge that, so.
I know.
Okay. So then, we have ready for this. Come in.
Yes.
All right, I think that concludes all of our business. There's some dates down here, we should see. Any other? Do you have any off-the-wall comments? Dustin, do you have any off-the-wall comments?
No, not at this time.
Good ears.
I'm ten literally off-the-wall comments. So the next meeting is May of fourteenth at five-thirty. We'll have the previous meeting at four-thirty for the Senate Committee to the next. The most previous officers.
And after, after that, we're, we're still going to continue with the not meeting in, in Ju-, in July? Are we going to meet in July? In the presidency, we've, we've skipped July meetings.
Yeah. Once we have some press, something that comes up, we can always take that until August.
Dustin, how do you feel about that?
I'm open to whatever decision the board is uh acceptable to take.
Three months, I won't come across you.
Check that off for you.
That's right.
No July.
No, no July.
No July.
Okay, we have motion to adjourn. So move. In a second.
Second.